Two more, I'll just admit. Alright, time is seven thirty. I am calling this meeting to order, a fourth Yardley Borough Council. Going to mute everyone and ask that you please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mary Ann, if you could go ahead with our roll call.
Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Segal-Morris?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Finer?
Present.
Mr. Brio?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
Present.
And Mr. Ross?
Here.
Thank you.
Alright, seven council members are present. That constitutes a quorum. We're also joined by Mayor Harding this evening. First up on our agenda is community announcements. Um, I'm going to start off real quick and assume that most of you have seen the news that the governor will be lifting most of the COVID-related restrictions on May thirty first, the exception being uh masking in indoor spaces as well as crowded outdoor spaces. Um, we will discuss what this means for borough uh under discussion items on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to ask that we hold those conversations until then. Uh, and also I'm giving you all a little bit of an assignment. Please, if I forget it, don't let us adjourn without that discussion. Um, are there any other items for community announcements tonight? I see a hand from Mr. Applebaum. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Brio. Um, just wanted to let people know that, uh, though it hasn't come up in front of council yet. I have um presented Wes with a uh application for a permit for music on Main. And uh, I look forward to um hopefully uh having that event uh you know sometime beginning in late uh July and only doing about half of the um events uh that we had done prior. But um, I just wanted to let the community know that uh it's not lost cause and uh as soon as we get um approval, um we'll get the band signed up and um hopefully rock and roll uh sometime this beginning sometime summer. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Applebaum, and certainly good news to hear some of those items from the pre-COVID times come back to normal. Any other community announcements tonight, uh either from council or members of the public? Alright, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move right on into public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that particular business item. Members of the public are asked to please state their name and address for the record. And if you wish to be recognized, please make use of the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you can't figure that out, turn your camera on, give us a wave, and we will recognize you.
Raise your hand.
Is there any public comment this evening? I see Mr. McGrath. Go ahead. And I think you might be muted. You don't seem to be muted, but the audio is not coming through.
Okay, got it.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Uh, just wanted to know if um if any of any of the council members have heard if there's been any progress with the uh the grants for elevation of homes in the floodplain. It's been, I think they were almost ninety-nine percent approved sometime in the fall and uh and haven't moved forward since since that time. And I just wanted to know if anybody had any insights or news. Um, appreciate anything you've heard. Thanks.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so, timing is good there. We did uh just announce at our last council meeting that the borough was ordered and uh on that order awarded around two million dollars for the elevation of, I believe, eight homes. Is that right, Paula?
Yes.
Eight homes. Uh, so that award just came through. Uh, obviously, we will begin the work of getting those projects underway. Uh, but we did receive a grant in this uh most recent round.
And if I could add, as soon as we get the grant agreements, that's when you'll start to see progress, Mr. McGrath. And I believe your house will be most likely first.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you very much. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Yep. Thank you. I do have other public comments this evening. Alright, uh. Louisa, go ahead. unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Louisa Flanagan. My husband is Paul Brazowski. We live at one oh six South Main Street. Um, and I guess what I I wanted to speak about what's happening um up at the Tannery and uh the fact that uh the fellow who has uh the vault, I believe his name is Jim, um, who was able to get uh some kind of conditional uh thing to be able to have a tasting room up at the vault uh at the Tannery. Um, well, it's to me, it's far from a tasting room. Uh, it's really a bar with food. And um, I don't think that that's appropriate uh with his uh other businesses or whatever, or whatever you want to call it. I don't know the civic rules and things like that, but I just know and have read about it, but I'm not able to speak about it. Um, but it just kind of makes me sad that he just keeps pushing the envelope. And we were up there uh recently. It was filled with people. There was um a band playing very loud rock and roll, which I love. I lived in the East Village, believe me. I saw the Grateful Dead in person. But um, and they were doing a lot of Grateful Dead songs, and that's great, but out in a parking lot um in the middle of a community, I just don't think that that's appropriate uh at, you know, what, six or five or six o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, so I just don't understand why he is able to go forward with these things and why the town is so complicit in letting him have the variances and things. Variance has usually come from hardship, and I don't see what hardship he has. He's got two wonderful businesses in Yardley. The vault is terrific. He got the ability to go and do the sushi, which is terrific sushi. And it's appropriate that he's got a wonderful place now to do it, a real, a real storefront to do it. And then that leaves Pretty Bird to be Pretty Bird, um, which is also a good business. So what, what, it's just pushing too much and it's going to turn that area into something that I don't think this community is going to be very happy with in the future. That's it.
Alright, thank you for sharing that. Uh, you know, we've received a number of comments, uh not during meetings, but I know to Borough Hall, Paula has heard from a number of residents. Uh, so we are taking a look, you know, I know that past that weekend in particular, I heard the band as well from a good distance away. Uh, so where that's going on, we're looking at what our options are in terms of issuing violation notices, you know. Personally speaking, I think it's kind of clear that there's some operation outside of what was initially permitted. Um, and then I just want to note as well that later in the agenda, uh under our manager's report, we will be discussing uh the zoning hearing board application that um the Tannery has submitted. Uh, so we will have a little bit more discussion on that particular piece of this issue uh when we get there in the agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there other public comment tonight? I see a hand from Ms. Perlmutter. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Dawn Perlmutter, eighteen West College Avenue. Um, following up on what Louisa just said, um, I'm right across the street from the Tannery. Um, I went back there when I could hear the music all the way, you know, from my house. Um, I was so surprised when I went back there because um apparently our code enforcement officer um was attending this event. He did not do anything to stop the music. Um, there were so many violations. Nobody was masked. There were hundreds, literally hundreds of people there. Um, every single parking space, and I think you've told me there's two hundred and ninety-seven of them. Um, the police were called several times. They never shut it down, even though the whole thing was absolutely illegal, um especially when it was limited to forty-nine people for a tasting room. So, um, I would like to know why our code enforcement officer was participating in this event and didn't do anything to disperse the crowd or shut the music down. And also why our Yardley Borough Police Officers did nothing to disperse the crowd or tell them to lower them, to stop the music. I mean, I've had officers here when I had a tiny little boombox for the one time I was exercising. Um, so I think it's more than just an issue of the zoning. It's an issue of code enforcement. Um, and why somebody who would be there, who's supposed to be the person who actually enforces our laws, is instead sitting there drinking a beer, participating in this. I think that's an aspect of it that's very important.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Perlmutter. Uh, that's the first that I heard. That a member of our staff was there. That's not something I can talk about now, but I will certainly follow up on that.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Mr. Brio, I asked Mr. Four Acre to go there when I started getting complaints. So he was not there as a patron. He went there after I asked him to go and address the loud music. So he was not sitting there drinking a beer.
I have pictures of him doing that.
I don't think so, Dawn.
I have video.
Excuse me, I'm going to put an end to this one. Um, you know, as has been precedent, I don't like to get into staffing issues during public comment. It is something uh that we will handle, discuss, and look at. Thank you. Uh, and uh, so I do see Mr. Four Acre, you have your hand up. You have anything to add just about um the discussion at hand? Go ahead.
Uh, just going to second what Manager Johnson said. I was summoned there. Uh, I was not an attendee and I was not participating in the drinking or anything. Uh, I attempted to speak with the band to have the music turned down. I spoke with Mr. Kane to have the music turned down, and I left and went back to what I was doing, which was working on my pool. I would love to see this picture of me that shows me drinking a beer because I was not.
No problem. I'll I'll send it to you, Mr. Brio.
Thank you, Ms. Perlmutter. Alright, we're going to move on. Is there any other public comment this evening? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Next up, item number six is consideration of the consent agenda dated for tonight, May fourth. There are three items listed for the consent agenda tonight. Those are approval of the minutes from our last meeting on April twentieth, approval of the bills list dated for today, May fourth, and approval uh from the rec board for a cornhole league. Would any member of council like one of these items to be considered separately from the consent agenda? Alright, I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for today?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Are there any comments, questions, concerns from council? Any from the public? And I see Ms. Perlmutter again.
Uh, thank you. I just had two questions on the bills list. Um, check number one nine one two one to ASA Analysis and Communication for seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. I think that's some kind of environmental thing. I don't know if that was for the Mary Yardley Bridge or not. Um, I just wanted to know what that, what part of the borough that that check was in reference to.
Yep, the ASA, um, that's when we approved at our last meeting, actually, and it's on tonight's bills list is um for the grant program, the watershed.
Oh, okay. Um, and the one
Always confuse them.
Um, the other one was check number nine three nine for streetlights, the um uh, the streetlights fund, Armor and Sons Electric, for two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, what specifically was that for?
Paula, do you have that one handy?
Streetlight repairs.
Was it related to um the negligence of the resident who ran over the electrical conduit with the backhoe? Was that related to that?
There was no negligence of the resident. It was streetlight repairs.
So we're paying for something that a resident caused with their backhoe. Is that what this is for? The repairs that were made?
The resident did the right things, called PA one call. They did the right thing.
So the borough is paying. The resident should have insurance for this. Why is the borough paying twenty-seven hundred dollars for something that somebody hit with their backhoe? They should have insurance for that.
That was numerous bills. It wasn't just one streetlight. That was to repair streetlights. There was some stuff at the intersection as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the consent agenda for tonight? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion carries seven two zero. Alright, next up, Chief Kelly for your chief report.
Yes, thank you, President Brio. Um, I have a service statistics for April twenty twenty-one. The police department handled four hundred and forty-four calls for service, issued fifty-four traffic citations, issued one non-traffic citation. We investigated six traffic accidents and made three arrests, one of which was for DUI, our first DUI of the year. Second item is drug takeback, which we conducted on April twenty-fourth. We uh took in thirty-three and one-half pounds of unused or expired medications here in Yardley Borough. And the county as a whole took in nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three pounds of unused and expired medications. And I I give those numbers out just to illustrate what a problem these drugs are, these expired and unused prescription medications, and how dangerous they are to have in your cabinet. So um, we'll, we'll publicize the next one again in October, and we hope to get another good turnout. The last item on my list for this evening, sir, is a reminder that tomorrow is Carry the Load. I know the mayor will go over it a little bit more, but from a public safety perspective, um, I would ask motorists between two thirty and four thirty um in the, in the Yardley Lower Mayfield area to uh pay extra attention on the roadway. Um, we'll have groups of people that are in this march. They will be escorted by police most of the time in the different municipalities they go through. Um, but just to pay extra attention so that we can get this very, very uh dedicated group of people through the county safely. And that completes my reports, sir.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Next on our agenda is an engineer's report. Move to Ms. Colletti.
Hi there. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Alright, good. Um, with regards to general updates, uh unless anyone has any specific questions, the only uh additional item I have to announce is in regards to the issue at eighteen Van Horn. Um, we've already see, received response to the NOV that was issued, and we are scheduling a meeting to go over the remediation plan. Uh, otherwise, everything else is as reported.
That is good news there, indeed. Let's cross our fingers on that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, alright, so unless there are any questions, I'd say go ahead with uh the updates.
Alrighty, um, Main and Afton intersection, the last payment was approved that the last Paula has provided me with um the proof of that. So hopefully we'll be able to formally close out the Green Light Go grant. Um, Pendot was asking for documentation showing that we spent our portion of the project, which we definitely have. So hopefully all of that documentation will be done in the near future, but the borough has already received our last reimbursement. So we're good on that end. Um, Mary Yardley Bridge, we learned recently that unfortunately we were not awarded the um DVR PC Trails Grant. Um, so that is unfortunate. And then we're still waiting to hear back from Pindy, but I'm going to start reaching out to the individual commissions to get that moving and going again. Um, Pico Property, we really don't have any movement on that right now, but hopefully this next year we can get that going and be prepared for next year's um grant cycles. And then North Main Sidewalk, we had a walkthrough last week with Pico to go over the utility pole relocations and some alternatives for that to avoid um some additional costs associated with tree removal. But everything is moving forward as it should.
Good news on all fronts. Do we have any questions for Ms. Colletti?
Liz, on the um, the Delaware Trails Grant, was that a surprise or did we get any feedback on that? I remember talking about it, but I don't remember the context. If you could just give your thoughts.
Um, we, we didn't get any direct feedback about why we were not awarded, but I do know that when we were talking to them initially, um, that they were focusing heavily on circuit trails and multi-use, and we were not able to make the bridge a multi-use. We would have had to increase it to eight feet. So I'm sure that kind of put us down near the middle of the, of the pack there. But if you wanted me to get more specifics from them, I could certainly reach out. But it, it wasn't, um, there was no match, and because of previous things that we've done, it was really quick for us to put the application together, so it didn't make sense not to.
Yep, thank you.
And, and is there, is there, does that change our timeline with the bridge, or are we still on track for doing that this summer?
Uh, as far as with the, the borough's plans to um possibly have to use money from the um the line of credit, I don't think it should impact our timeline. No.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions? Alright, seeing none, we will conclude that portion of our meeting and move right on to Ms. Johnson for manager's report.
Our new credit card processing is up and running, and there is a link on our homepage of our website, and residents and others are starting to use this new system. You can actually go right onto the website and pay trash, police reports, numerous other bills right there. So it's, makes it easier for us, and we have no fees associated with it. Um, I just wanted to point out there is an error in our latest newsletter. Memorial Day is actually on May thirty-first, not the twenty-fourth. Um, and then I also have a few items that I need to ask council's action on. The first one is the replacement of the air conditioning unit in council chambers. And if we go back to live meetings, you might want to get this done. Uh, the unit was twenty years old. I had three companies come in, look at the unit that's there, look at the roof and everything. We received the three quotes. Sweeney's was the lowest for seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So I would like council's approval to move forward and get this repaired.
Alright, so is there a motion uh to award this job to Sweeney's for the air conditioner replacement in Borough Hall in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion was made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Is there any discussion, comments, questions from council? Anything from the public? Seeing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, motion carries seven two zero. Back to you, Ms. Johnson.
And the second item I have is, as you are aware, that we started cleaning out the upstairs storage closet. This is something that hasn't been done in about ten or fifteen years. So Patty and I took a lot of time going through each box, seeing what was able to be disposed of. Um, we lined up probably about twenty boxes. I called a shredding company. It's going to cost about a hundred and seventy-five dollars to have everything shredded properly. It'll be destroyed on site. So before you, I have resolution twenty-one oh three that will allow for us to dispose of these records. And as you see in the list, it's mostly time sheets, proof of publication. There's nothing that's historical in here. It's bank statements from many years ago.
Alright, thank you. So before I ask for a motion, I will just read the resolution into the record. It is pretty short. We have resolution number twenty-one dash zero three, a resolution of Borough Council Yardley, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the disposition of certain public records. Whereas by virtue of resolution number fifteen dash oh one, adopted February fifteenth, twenty fifteen, the Borough of Yardley declares its intent to follow the schedules and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth in the municipal records manual approved December sixteenth, two thousand eight. And whereas, in accordance with Act four twenty-eight of nineteen sixty-eight, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by resolution of the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved, the Borough Council of Yardley, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, in accordance with the above cited municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public records described in Schedule A attached here too. And as Paula did just outline, uh, all of the records here are administrative in nature. Uh, many of them are more than ten years old. Uh, so this is all just routine. So is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero three?
So moved.
Back on.
Alright, motion was made by Ms. Segal-Morris, seconded by Ms. Thompson. There any comments, discussion, questions from council? Anything from the public? Alright, hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, motion carries seven to zero. Shred away.
Awesome, thank you. And my last item is the taproom. As most of you are aware, they were supposed to go to zoning hearing board last week. They asked for a continuance. The meeting was opened, and then the hearing was announced that it was going to be continued. Zoning Hearing Board granted that, so this will be on zoning hearing boards, May twenty-fourth, meeting at seven o'clock. Um, there were a number of residents that came out uh for, to hear this hearing, somewhere I could tell forward, some against. Um, I don't believe council chambers will be able to accommodate everybody as of that time. I did get in touch with the community center, and they did offer and allow us to use the community center for this hearing. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with this before I scheduled it.
Yeah, I doubt we have any objections um to using the community center to accommodate all those that want to attend. Uh, and I think, you know, also, this is an item where council may want to uh send our solicitor uh to take a stance on this particular issue. I think the variance they're looking for is to include a full kitchen.
Right, they want to expand.
That would convert that to full restaurant status. Um, so I'll open this up to council now if there is um a motion uh for a solicitor to participate uh and oppose at the zoning hearing board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so that motion was made by Mr. Ross and seconded by Ms. Thompson. Do we have any discussion?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the motion, please? I didn't, I didn't catch it.
Uh, yes, so it would be to have the borough solicitor uh participate and oppose the variance at these hearing hearing board meetings scheduled for the end of this month regarding the taproom.
I mean, I don't, I don't feel like I have enough information to vote on that.
David, why, what would be
Not sure what we're opposing or why we're taking a position.
So by way of some background here, um, the, and Paula, I may need you to jump in with the case here, but I, the area was not zoned and is not zoned for a restaurant to be there, which is why they're requesting the variance. The tasting room was allowed in the first place as accessory use. Uh, they are producing and maybe bottling beer there. The accessory use is what allowed for the forty-some people. Part of the deal was that um food would have to be brought in from the other restaurants. It couldn't be cooked on site. Uh, so they are now asking for the full variance to install the kitchen and um basically convert to a full functioning restaurant in that location. Um, around the time of that special use, when that was allowed, that did not require a variance. Um, we did hold some public sessions, just listening sessions on that issue. Uh, there were some strong opinions coming from the neighborhood. Uh, and now it's before us, right? They're going before zoning hearing board. We certainly could wait to make our decision as council until next meeting, uh, being that it's before the zoning hearing board meeting, but I wanted it on agenda tonight.
Alright, thank you for explaining that. I mean, I think the might, the only thing that I want to share here regarding that is that All right, thank you for explaining that. I mean, I think the might, the only thing that I wanna share here regarding that is that um, yeah, I wanna be careful that we don't put the cart before the horse and invest in uh, time for the solicitor to be there when uh, my understanding how this works is the residents who you are opposed to it, who's, who it affects directly will be at that zoning meeting. A decision will be made whether the variance makes sense or not, and then we get to vote on it. Why does the solicitor need to be there? That's, that's the part I'm not understanding.
All right, so Bucky, you might be able to explain this one better than I, but we need to have party status at the hearing?
Y- y- yeah, I mean, there's, there's some nuance here. I mean, technically, the borough is a party to every zoning hearing board matter. And you know, in, in, in theory, you could, you know, and, and in most cases, we don't, you know, show up and make a formal presentation. And if there's this, a decision that the borough is opposed to, you know, technically, the borough could still appeal that, um, you know, to the next level. That, so that's permitted um, under the statutes. Obviously, when there's uh, you know, something that's um, you know, perhaps more controversial or the council wants to um, you know, make sure that, you know, certain questions are asked or things are on the record, then it's appropriate for um, the council to authorize the solicitor to attend to, to make sure that the record is clear. And you know, certain questions get asked, you know, that sort of thing. And then I guess the, the next level then would be, you know, to be authorized us to take a formal position on a matter, whether it's to oppose or, or to support one way or the other. So that's sort of the, the different layers of participation that council could, um, you know, authorize us to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, David and Bucky for explaining that. I, I did not have all the history, so it was helpful to get that context. I think I'd like to learn more, so I'm not in a position to say I'm in favor of this or against it. And I think I need personally to learn a lot more, so I'm in favor of sending someone if we think that's the right thing to do, but not as an advocate for either side until at least for me, I get more information and more perspective from residents.
All right, uh, further comment? Anyone on council?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just um, echo the statements of uh, Mr. Curt and Mr. Finer. I, I, I think I, I would need more information to vote on this. It'd be, we would be taking a position um, by arguing against and, you know, I know that's the position of the zoning hearing board and I know a lot of residents will be voicing their opinion, so I would be of the same mindset as our, my fellow council members.
And unfortunately, we don't really have the benefit of time to do homework here. Um, the decision is going to be made at the upcoming zoning hearing board meeting. And then if it's approved, the expansion to the kitchen will occur. Um, so we re, i- i- if we believe that it is in the best interest of the borough or if we are upholding our ordinances by um, limiting growth in that area, which is owned within a residential district, then um, it, you know, according to our ordinances, we need to oppose. I think uh, the taproom has taken many liberties with size of crowds, with um, noise violations, with um, you know, making food on site, so this is going a step further. Um, and we have avenues for doing a lot of these things, like special event permits, so that our residents are not kept awake at night, you know, they have to be during certain hours and with proper approvals. So um, yeah, I am, I am in support of opposing uh, this request.
Paula, can I ask, or maybe David, you're the best person, but it, it, I wanna make sure I understand it. Right now, they can serve food as long as they don't prepare it there.
Correct.
Now they wanna like, actually make it there, but there's no change to the amount of people that can go. There's no change to the hours they can operate, like all these other issues which maybe are valid or unrelated to this. This is just, can I heat it up here or do I have to heat it up somewhere else?
Paula, do you have the full, were, were, were there other items? I know the kitchen was the main item. Were there other items they were asking for there?
I don't believe they were expanding the seating, but I will have to double check that tomorrow. And I, I'll send everybody the applications and any paperwork that I have for it as well.
That was my collection too, that it was just.
But that in and of itself is against the conditional use of how they are zoned. They cannot prepare food on site um, without overriding the ordinances in the borough. And that's exactly why that ordinance exists, because we don't want growth within this district of a restaurant. And I think, you know, we can assume that when they are preparing on site, greater quantities, a larger menu, that larger crowds will follow.
Why would the zoning board approve, approve a variance if it's in gross conflict with ordinances? That's what I'm not understanding. And there's opposition in the community. I mean, doesn't that, isn't that the purpose of the zoning board to?
I'm gonna be.
Do we not trust?
Say that I don't wanna speak for our zoning hearing board. Um, but you, you know, we've seen unexpected decisions before. I, you know, in best practice, I think, where if, if we have a position to, to take it and represent that. Um, you know, and we certainly get into familiar territory where, okay, we have, we have these zoning ordinances. Um, and what are they for if every time someone asks for an exception, we give it to them? Uh, all right, I know we have some public comment on this, but I just wanna.
Hey, can I, can I just jump in again about the kitchen? Because I, I mean, they do make their own beer there that was approved. And then there are a number of businesses within that uh, facility as well. And, and, and so, eh, am I getting this right? It is just a kitchen that is being approved. Is that correct then?
The, right, so the zoning hearing board application is, is just for that kitchen. Um, you know, we've been hearing about this particular business on a couple of other fronts, which relate to the hours they're open, the crowd sizes. There were other terms that were part of that original uh, accessory use. Um, you know, that we do need to admit, to revisit from a code enforcement perspective, uh, because there's been some slipping there. Uh, but as it relates to the variance they're requesting from zoning hearing board, it's about installing that full kitchen.
I mean, it, it does seem like that is an issue that is concerning residents. It needs to be addressed. And I, I'm a little, it seems like the two issues have gotten like intertwined. I think that the code enforcement, if they're not following what they agreed to, we need to, to address that. That's why I hear residents asking and that's that, that's just, needs to happen regardless. And that's just, the law is the law.
I, I agree with that.
Not allow a kitchen because they're not following the, the rules is it, it's a different thing. It's like, I don't, I don't know if a kitchen is good or not, or I don't, I don't know the details. That's what I'm kinda saying. Okay, that's zoning. That's what they do. And that, that they have a forum for that. Rather than get involved in that, why don't we put our energy towards code enforcement, making sure that, you know, all of what they're supposed to be doing, they're doing.
We have to agree with Carolyn and Caroline, sorry. Um, very sorry about that. Um, it's zone residential and it should be, you know, I think the residents in the area have a right to peace and quiet and to expect that and to ex, um, to not have um, what they expect encroached upon by a change in the ordinance or any, any possible, or they shouldn't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna agree with Kim and Carolyn and David. Um, I mean, the real issue here is what I think is unintended consequences and precedent, 'cause it's, it's not zoned to be a restaurant. So if somebody says, hey, it can be a restaurant, why can't any random house become a restaurant? Because the precedent's been set. Um, so I just, I, I fear issues like that down the road, 'cause you do something you think is okay now and then two, three years down the road, it, it, it turns into a big old can of worms. So, I mean, it's, it's per the code, it's not allowed. So I think that the borough's position should be that we support that it's not allowed.
I think those are very reasonable perspectives, like I, I do. I just, to me, I look at it just, why do we even have any say at all? There is an existing code. We're choosing to decide. We always have to decide which we enforce and which we don't, right? It's not like we never, we, we decide. And I guess in my mind, I agree with Yuri. I don't know enough, but my inclination is if he's bringing in food from somewhere else and heating it up, it's not any different cooking it there, right? There may be other issues to address for sure, and I'm not limiting those. But this in and of itself as an isolated issue doesn't bother me, but I do respect the other perspective. It's not unreasonable what you're saying and there's always creep.
I think there is a difference between cooking, and I, I could be wrong, but if you're bringing the food already prepared and heating it up, if you're cooking there, then wouldn't you be getting deliveries there? And they may already be getting deliveries because they make beer, but wouldn't you be getting food supply deliveries to be cooking that food? And wouldn't that create some sort of other traffic issues or business, you know, and interruption of residential life?
That's not.
Yeah, again, I, I agree, I agree with Kim. It's just, you don't know what's gonna happen, like what? If we say okay to this and then it gets passed and then what, why can't the building next to it, the, that whole place turn into a strip of restaurants and bars and clubs or wha- whatever it is? Because it's, it's now allowed. Now it's a precedent. Now that whole area should be allowed to do it, so that's why I'm kinda not for this.
And I just wanted to say, I, I kinda disagree on some of those. It's not zone residential, that building complex that has numerous businesses. Um, I, I, I think that's saying someone's gonna cook something in their home and sell it versus something that's already an existing restaurant that is, already has food served there. I, I think the difference is they're gonna improve the quality of their food by adding a kitchen. But um, i- if all the other standards are saying the same, we can enforce those standards. It, you know, I, I, I don't think we should take a position on that.
And uh, I'm gonna turn this one over to public comment. Now we're sort of walking in circles on this and no doubt that these are all the issues that will be discussed at the zoning hearing board itself. Um, so I wanna open up, there's any public comments uh, regarding this motion? And I see that Ms. Perlmutter, you've had your hand up for a while, so go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm directly across the street from the Tannery. They're nineteen West College on eighteen West College. And um, you're absolutely correct. They're already operating a kitchen. There are Cisco trucks that can't make the turn. The electric wires have come down. There's numerous um, uh, large trucks, so it does affect the traffic patterns. Um, but more of a concern is that um, it's not just the issue of the food. Um, they have been running a nightclub and a comedy club since they opened. Um, they're not zoned for that. They don't have the um, liquor control board does not allow it. Um, they have on their website bands scheduled for the whole summer. Um, they have a comedy night scheduled this week. None of that's allowed. Um, it's under the tent. It's never limited to forty-nine people. So it has been a huge disruption for three different streets, for Main Street, for College Avenue and for Van Horn. And it's just because, you know, people make noise when they park their cars and when they're outside and, and drinking. It's, it's a number of different issues. It's really not just the food. Um, and it's never been enforced. In fact, it's operating this weekend. I don't know why it's not being shut down. There should be a cease and desist since it's completely illegal. Um, Mr. Brea held the meeting with Mr. Itel and all of us, and they assured us that this wouldn't happen. And it is happening. Um, so it's real, you know, nobody dislikes the vault or happy that it's on Main Street. And um, but this affects three different residential streets. So I, I hope that helps clarifying some of the issues. It's not just the restaurant.
Thank you, Ms. Perlmutter. Um, and just before we continue, you know, one item I did wanna note, I got a message about it uh, in the chat, is that the Tannery is uh, zone industrial. However, it is adjacent uh, to several residential areas and a number of neighborhoods. Um, I think, which is why, you know, we see, it's essentially, it's, it's a business park. Uh, Mr. Applebaum, I see a hand from you.
Hi, David Applebaum, thirty-nine, Greece. Um, first of all, anyone who knows me knows that I support business. But I think there's more to this than just the ordinances that may or may not be uh, in violation. And that is being a good neighbor. So if a precedent is created by expanding uh, to a full kitchen, as I, I, I can't remember who said it, but then that does open up the door for uh, other businesses that may want to um, open up similar types of venues. And uh, that certainly would not make us good, you know, make them good neighbors. And so as much as I support business, I think we have to work within the uh, constraints of these ordinances and how zoning has uh, you know, has prescribed, it, it, you know, it makes these decisions, uh, because if you don't follow them, then there's no point to having a zoning board or having ordinances. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, David. Um, Paul B., I'm not gonna say your last name, it's too.
Don't even try, don't even try. You know, I come from the bar business in Chicago. I, my father had a bar for forty years. My grandfather had a bar dealt with Al Capone. And I know what happens here. You see what happened? He got in with the forty to forty-nine people that he was allowed to have for a tasting room because it was an adjunct business to his business. And then he sneaks in the food, then he sneaks in the outdoor seating. I know that was COVID, but of course he's gonna try to keep that outside seating. Then he, how does he go from a tasting room to three hundred people who listening to a Grateful Dead concert? How does that happen? It's by allowing kitchens. It's by allowing, I, I, I don't understand, like Luisa said earlier, variances are allowed for hardships. What hardship is he having? I'm counting, we sit right there on one oh-six South Main Street, right across from the firehouse. I count how many cars come down that uh, College Avenue. Fifty cars an hour are coming up or down that into our headlights, are coming into our uh, um, house with Lance's house and my house. And I'm for, I'm like David Applebaum. I love business, but not in the right place. If you're gonna start i- i- in the, in the wrong place, if you're going to allow this, like many of you have been saying, then it's going to expand and expand and expand. We've seen it happen so many times. And I think this is one time that you have to support the homeowners. We have invested so much money in our house. We've worked for fifty years, my wife and I. We bought this house on Main Street, love this town. I'm for business. There's a lot of empty stores that can be used, that can be filled on Main Street and in our town, but not up at the Tannery.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Is Posy?
Yeah, yes. Hi, I'm Gail Posey. Um, my husband and I live at one twenty South Main Street. So we're directly um, across the street from the parking lot and the, um, and are hearing the noise from the Tannery. Um, my understanding is that it's zoned light industrial, which does not include restaurants of any kind. Um, the letter that we received from the zoning um, board stated that they were seeking a variance for a restaurant. It did not say they were seeking a variance for a kitchen. It said for a restaurant. So I would assume that that entails more than just a kitchen. And it also means that there'll be more people there than just the forty-nine that were approved. Um, I don't understand why we have ordinances in Yardley Borough if we're not going to enforce them. Um, we've, numerous people have talked about the things that have been happening up there. The police were called, um, and nothing has happened. They continue to do this, which is part of the reason that I'm very much against this. I'm for business, but not in a residential area. Go down into the commercial e- end of the, of the town. That's why we bought houses where we bought them, not the, I mean, we wanted to be part of Yardley, but we didn't wanna be part of the commercial district. So please stop the commercial part from coming up into the residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. If any further public comments? All right, I don't see any. Uh, so to recap, the motion that we currently have on the floor is um, for our solicitor to participate in the zoning hearing board meeting regarding the Tannery at nineteen West College Avenue and to oppose the requested variance uh, by that business. I will call the question. Um, actually, no, I'm not gonna call a question. I'm gonna ask for a roll call on this one because I'm sensing that we may be split. So Mary Ann, if you could do a roll call, um, summarize a vote, yes, means that you are voting for uh, the opposition. We're a little twisted backwards on that. Uh, so Mary Ann, if you go ahead.
Thompson?
Hi.
Miss Segal Morris?
Hi.
Mr. McCann?
Uh, Nick.
I think we should focus on enforcement and let the zoning board do its thing. So nay.
Mr. Curtin?
Agree with Councilman Finer, nay.
And Mr. Ross?
Hi.
And Mr. Bria?
Hi.
So we have uh, four, yay, three nay.
Motion carries for free. We are still in the manager's report portion of this meeting. Paula, do you have anything else to add on your report?
No, sir. I do not.
All right, we'll close that out and move on then to Mr. Klosser for your solicitor's report.
Uh, nothing to report this evening.
All right, staying out of the fire. Uh, Juan, Mayor Harding, do your report.
Hey, so I'll try to keep it brief. Um, as everyone knows, tomorrow is the carry the load date in Yardley Borough. It is the tenth anniversary of Carry the Load, the eighth year that we've been involved with them. So that's pretty good standing. Um, it takes a lot of people to put this on, so I want to thank publicly Chief Kelly and his department. And part of the carry load is about them, our emergency service providers. So thank you for that. For our borough staff, um, all of them have been Bob, Paula, Patty and Wes. So thank you for that. Uh, each year. We have a goal as a community to raise five thousand dollars to donate to carry the load. And some years we've made that goal and some years we haven't. And every year we've kind of targeted a different avenue to try to raise funds. Some years it was residents, some years it was. Canning at the intersection, some years it was part of um, restaurant bills on certain days. This year, we kind of just spoke to a lot of the local businesses. And I'm gonna tell you right now, we are only a thousand dollars away from reaching our goal, which is fantastic. The local businesses have stepped up. Uh, so if anyone is listening or anyone is talking to a local business and they'd like to make a donation. That would be fantastic. We'd love to hit our goal. So we're only a thousand dollars away on that. Uh, we're gonna start tomorrow at one forty-five. We step off from Washington Crossing. We've always made it. Recently, a goal to be with the Carry the Load walkers as soon as they enter Pennsylvania. So we'll walk from Washington Crossing and arrive in Yardley at three P M., which is when we have the Yardley Borough official rally. From three to three thirty P M. So come down and cheer the walkers on and then they will head out. Towards Newtown, leaving the borough at three thirty in the afternoon. The final challenge this year, every year we try to change things around and and walk longer distances or carry some heavy weight for some strange reason. Uh, this year, we've got a very small group of people that are going to try to walk the entire Pennsylvania stretch with Carry the Load. So it's just about just over fifty miles. So those people will be walking essentially from one forty-five. P M. On Wednesday and we'll finish walking at eleven A M. On Thursday. Uh, so a big dedication uh, to that group. And two more things. We're excited this year. P H L seventeen will be with us, Channel seventeen news. Uh, their morning news on Thursday morning when we enter the city. So they're gonna do four live broadcasts, one in the five A M. Hour, six A M. Hour, seven A M. Hour. Eight A M. Hour. So if you're looking for updates, you know, put on P H L seventeen news that morning. Uh, and you may see some updates from the walk, which would be great. And then lastly, obviously, in spirit of the walk. Um, we are supposed to, you know, the the goal is to carry someone to walk in honor of someone in past years. We've done that for local military or emergency service providers who have uh, made the ultimate sacrifice. And and this year we're sticking with that tradition. Uh, so this year I am proud that Yardley Borough and myself will be walking for First Lieutenant Travis Mannion. So out of Doylestown, it's a perfect cause. It's the ten year anniversary. It's a perfect year to do it for Travis. So I appreciate everyone's help. I know council's been sharing the posts and and commenting. That's great. The public has been doing it. So I appreciate that. And uh. You know, Carrie Lotus has carved a little special niche in Yardley Borough and trust me, they appreciate what we give them too. So. It's a win win and I just want to thank everybody and hopefully we can see you tomorrow at some point where if not, just watch the news Thursday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. Thank you for all you've done to put this together and bring it here year after year. Uh. I've been able to walk with you guys the past couple of years. I don't think I'm gonna make it tomorrow, although I may come join you somewhere further down the route. After work. Uh, but for those of you that have not participated before, uh, it is worth is worth the time. Uh, and it's an incredible cause. So if you are able to head over there, walk, make a contribution, whatever your way of participating is. I would really recommend that you do that.
Thank you, David. And if anybody has any questions, just reach out to me, text, email, whatever, offline tonight or tomorrow, and we'll get we'll get your questions addressed.
All right. Thank you. From there, we will move into council member reports. We begin with Mr. Fa- uh, Mr. Curtin.
New report. Thank you, David.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Ross.
New report.
Thank you, Miss Segal Morris.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Uh, from myself, I just wanted to quickly report that I participated in a Zoom meeting with other. Borough Council Township Supervisor members that was hosted by Senator Sarah, San Sero's office. Uh, that was regarding the. Incoming American Rescue Plan Funds. They're at least still on course to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Um, that will be split into two payments. They are referring to them as tranches. Uh, so we will get half of that this year. Half of that will be coming in around this time next year. Uh, the date by which we must receive payment from the state is in the uh, is in early June. However, it is possible that we will see it earlier. Uh, this is one of the frustrations with this program is we're not too sure when the money's coming, but we, I. Think are just glad that we're getting it at all. Uh, we still are also waiting on some of the more concrete spending guidelines. Although it is safe to say that they will have to be COVID related in some capacity. Um, so I know that our borough staff has been working to keep a close accounting of our COVID related expenditures. Um, because we should be able to reimburse the general fund for some of those costs that we've incurred over the past year and a half. Uh, so more to come. On that program and I will certainly keep everyone apprised as that funding comes in and the guidelines become available. Yeah.
Ask one question, please, about that. Uh, I don't know if you found this out, but just since we just approved the air conditioning. Um, and if if like a Merv, it's like Merv thirteen, I think it's like a filter that uh, prevents viruses. Um, since we're already doing it, it's actually not a very expensive thing, but I just wonder if we. Um, if that funding can be used to pay for the new A C system, especially if we include a better filtration. Um, that would be great that we got it paid for and also we'd have better filtration before we just spend the money. Can we find that out?
We can try. Uh, Paula, I will forward you some contact information. Uh, for the folks over in in Harrisburg that are more familiar with the specific guidelines. You know, using the. Money that showed up through the cares program, the way some of this would work is that. You know, you probably would say, well, A C replacement, that was something you were gonna have to do anyway, but the upgrades might be eligible for reimbursement from that funding. Um, so that's, you know, something we can, we can definitely look into. Sort of waiting any day for those guidelines to come out. So Paula, I'll forward you the the contact information for those folks who'll be able to answer that question better than I can. All right, that concludes my report. Uh, Ms. Thompson?
No report.
Mr. McCann?
No report.
And Mr. Fire?
Just um, on the uh, website, there's now an opt-in for uh, that you can put your, if you don't have your, to spread the word, if you don't have your name in there. As far as getting emails from council. So if you already get emails, it's still good to go on the website. Under residence or you can go under contact. Either way, there's a link with a button and you can opt in. And what that means is you put in your. Name and also you can put in, um, if you're a business or if you live in the borough or not. Um, and that's great because we can keep that information on file and in the future we can use that. Um, to alert, for example, residents to certain things, but also you be, you know, you 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 get the uh. I guess they're like every twice a month emails with the that Paula sends out, um, where the borough staff sends out. So basically what I'm saying is whether or not you get those emails, it's a good idea to go opt in again because our, the system is smart and you won't get duplicates. But this way we'll have all the information we need for the future. Um, and which we might make use of at some point, such as whether you're a resident or not or a business or not. Um, so that's one thing. And then um, outside of that, I participated in a meeting with the council president and Paula as well. And reading the website. And in that conversation came up some ideas that in the recent community outreach meeting. Uh, uh, councilperson Thompson and I talked about uh, that we might be able to actually. Um, try some of those things out on the existing site before the new site is uh, is ready. Um, such as perhaps a new calendar system. So we're looking into that. Um, things to just get things running a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our council member reports. Uh, and as promised, for discussion items, uh, we have. The lifting of the COVID restrictions by Governor Wolf, which I believe is effective eleven fifty nine P M. May thirty first. Um, so that certainly leads us to. What is the borough going to do as a result of that? Um, so I think the questions I'd like us to consider. And we certainly can table a lot of this into our next council meeting as well. We don't need to take any action tonight. Um, the two questions I'd like us to focus on are, do we bring back our in-person council meetings? Do we look for a hybrid solution? Um, and then as it relates to the businesses, if. The restrictions regarding seating capacity, particularly for our restaurants, if those are lifting, do we then also lift? Uh, the accommodations that we've made in terms of using the parking lot, the tents. Um, all of those other things that have been in place for the past year and a half. Uh, I believe that although the restrictions are lifting, the emergency declaration still stays in place. Uh, which means we would assume retain the ability to continue with Zoom meetings. Uh, and all of the other special provisions that were put in place by that emergency declaration. Uh, but I'll just open it up. I'm curious to hear thoughts uh, on which way we should go, how quickly we should get there.
Thank you. I am interested in going back to in person. I think there's just certain types of discussion and outreach with the community that is more fruitful when. We are all in one room. However, we have seen increased participation while we've been remote and. More diverse and varied participation from folks that we had never seen in council meetings before. So I think it is. Very important that we ensure some sort of hybrid is available into the future for both, um, you know. Council members and staff who might not be comfortable coming back immediately and also members of the public who have used this as a way to get involved. So. Um, you know, ensuring that our. Our remote system is compatible with Zoom or videography system is compatible with Zoom, which I don't think it, you know, it it has some capabilities currently, but not. Full functionality would be important for me to uh, say we should move forward, but I'm interested in getting back into the building.
I'd like to say that um, I I think the emergency declaration plays a role in this. Um, and I think one of the confusing things right now is. Um, we're probably gonna have very low COVID numbers in the summer. They might start going up again. There's variants, there's a lot of questions. Um, and uh, you know, in terms of going in per- and I I agree with uh. Uh, councilperson Thompson as far as um. Uh, we should have a hybrid if we go back into the building, uh, because there's just too many variables. Um, but we could also just not do that since this is working until the time is such that it makes sense that. Things really are quote unquote normal again. Uh, in terms of the restaurants, though. I think for businesses, it's very hard to kind of have regulations change on them. And so my general sense of this is that. Um, that emergency declaration will be lifted when it's no longer an emergency and the restrictions, they will come and go as needed. And so when we do things that um, require planning and affect uh, businesses' decisions like that are several months in the future. Um, we should do so uh, when we're very confident that we won't have to change it again.
Good points.
Yeah, I I'll just jump in. I uh, my perspective and I shared some of this with John and David at the um, Community Economic Development Meeting. You know, I. I think some flexibility for patrons who may want to frequent our businesses, but are not yet personally comfortable to go inside just because. That's permitted. Maybe not everyone's comfortable with that. So I'd be open to some grace period and. Yeah, to me, it feels like just throwing it out there, the summer, maybe into the fall. To allow for some of the tents, if that's something that we get consensus people value, I'm I'm open to that and would be supportive of that. I think on whether or not we return to in-person meetings. I guess I'd like some guidance on how much discretion we really have. Like, uh, you know, maybe that's a question for Bucky. Like if. The emergency declaration's in place, is it up to us? If the emergency declaration's not in place, do we have a choice? Like, I don't know enough about the requirements on us as it relates to discretion. Uh, versus what is is dictated by state law. Right, so the statute that permits virtual meetings that was passed, um, I guess it was last March. Um, is tied to the governor's emergency declarations. So if that is lifted at some point, then. Unless there's a change in the statute, which I suppose could happen. Um, but if no, then uh, the authority to have virtual meetings would uh, you know, terminate at that point. And so I guess the key is we had the authority to have virtual meetings and we're taking advantage of that for good reason. But there's no requirement that we have on, it's just we're deciding to do that and we can decide not to at any point. That that's right. Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on this topic?
Uh, I I would just jump in with similar sentiments, but I I would say that, you know, we should. You know, if we're if we're gonna remove the tents and and or or push to move them um. From the businesses who have struggled and certainly not every person is gonna be comfortable. Um, you know, I do think at some point we do have to get me meeting in person and I do think it would. You know, if we were to remove the tents and say, hey, everything's back to normal, you should be eating in restaurants. And I think we we should be meeting in person at that point. Um, but I do would would welcome approach where we, you know, and I I we talked about it at our meeting. You know, outreach to businesses, see what their expectation is, see how they've been doing, see, you know, and kind of have a conversation with a lot of people and get input. From a lot of people. Um, if we were to remove this, that, you know, has helped some of our businesses and will probably continue to do. So um, and in person, uh, again, I think us meeting. Um, I I don't know what everyone's comfort level is and I know there's some legal obligations, but at the same time, um. You know, I I feel I'm fully vaccinated. I know others are starting to get there, but I do think at some point when, you know, the adult population is fully vaccinated. I I I think they're. Um, for us at least, I would feel comfortable coming back in.
Thanks. You know, and I should note too that I think, I think we all know this here, that, you know, we're we're not talking about, okay. The restrictions go away, May thirty first, tents are all gone, June first, right? I think what our job should be here is if. We're gonna go back to normal, we need to provide that timeline and that framework. So if there's no surprises on any businesses, there's clear target dates to make that transition. Uh, back to the way it was before. And, you know, we can certainly consider other elements of that that we want to keep. That's a separate discussion, but I know that a lot of the sidewalk seating, you know, to me, and I don't know how the rest of you feel, it doesn't feel. Like something that's there because of COVID anymore. It just feels like part of the town now. And, you know, that can be a separate discussion we want to have. Do we want to keep any of this? You know, things that we decided maybe worked well. Um, but everything right now as it stands is sort of provisional and and tied to the emergency order and. You know, some of these items, we kind of decided, well, let's not outline a strict framework. Let's just do what's right. Um, but as this draws to a close over the the next few months, it's gonna be time to. You know, find what is our solution? What's the framework we want to work with and be clear about that with our businesses? Uh, so everybody's aware what the requirements will be. Um, all right, I see two comments uh, from staff. So I saw Mr. Forker first. You go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, figuring that this was gonna be coming up soon, I reached out to. The businesses this week that are utilizing tents and all of them but one have self-certified, which means they're allowed to have. Uh, more occupancy than those that didn't self-certify. Um, and I do believe that that's what's keeping these businesses afloat right now because it's getting them uh, very close to one hundred percent occupancy. Uh, the one business that did not self-certify, um, they're very small. Their tent's very small, so I think they're probably close to being on par to what they were uh, prior to March of twenty twenty. And I also reached out to the Board of Health uh, to get their uh. Perspective on where things were heading. And they were very supportive of allowing residents or businesses. I'm sorry, to uh, increase occupancy with the provision that they put in proper barriers. with the provision that they put in proper barriers. So there's expense there for the businesses. Though, I, I do believe that the tents, with one exception, have not really been a problem in the borough. But that's also what's keeping these businesses whole right now. And they employ a lot of our, you know, folks in town. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, and Chief.
Thank you very much for that insight. It's a really, really important consideration, because these businesses that have held it together and gotten creative and been able to function, I think we owe them a great deal of gratitude for doing the work it did, not just to survive for themselves, but for all of us not to have an empty town to come back to.
And Chief, I see, I gotta hand up too.
Yes, sir, thank you. I, I also agree with a slow and metered transition back to, uh, normalcy, but I would urge council to remember there are some public safety considerations here. If these tents remain too long into full occupancy of the indoors, our restaurant parking is designed based on full occupancy of the indoors. Our pedestrian pathways through the center of town are designed, um, based on that occupancy. So if we, and I think you're going to see it, I think you're gonna see a return en masse to the restaurants if they had full occupancy on the inside while enjoying full occupancy on the outside. It's not something we can't deal with, but it could become, it could increase danger to pedestrians, it could increase traffic and traffic accidents and it could, uh, increase our parking burden. So none of it's insurmountable, but it's just some food for thought and, you know, I'm, I'm glad what I'm hearing that, we're gonna talk to people, we're gonna find out what we need to do, but we will return to, um, some type of transition to indoor dining and, and reduction of some of this outdoor soon.
Thank you, Chief. So opening up if there's any public comment or discussion in regards to this. Don't see any at this time. Uh, we certainly will continue to revisit this, this subject, whether it be at next meeting or on from there. I think we're on a dream that we'd like some feedback from the businesses. We're gonna need to think about what does it mean, uh, from the borough's point of view. But I think our goal here really should be putting together a clear, measured timeline, uh, for these transitions. So we'll keep on our eye on the data as, you know, certainly COVID has been unpredictable at times before, so we, I agree with what Mr. Finer was saying, is we don't want to rush into something and then have to go the other way. But, you know, we are at a point where the county's allowing for walk-ins at their vaccination clinics. You know, we are seeing some things return to normal, so we need to be thinking ahead.
Capacity-wise, are they, I, I thought they were limited to their capacity. Even with the tent, it's the same capacity, is that not the case? Are they basically, is there no limit to the capacity? Or is, does, does the capacity limit go up from full capacity to full capacity plus the tent? Or is it the same capacity limit whether that's inside or outside?
It's, it's really very confusing. I was under the impression that the self-certified businesses could go to seventy-five percent. And that was part of the question I posed to the Health Department this week. And they advised that as long as the, the indoor dining has proper barriers between tables or six feet of separation, they can put as many people in there as they want. You know, fire code loading obviously plays in, but, you know, as long as you meet those, uh, barrier concerns or distancing, they're not really concerned with occupancy loading at this point. Go ahead and go, this was pretty much what they said. And that was from the Deputy Director of County Health Department.
Got it. So that may be an area we could look at, is to create some, to, if we don't know what the mix of inside and outside is, just say, okay, the limit is what the original limit was and you can figure out the right ratio. Something, I'm just throwing it out there, it's a possible way of dealing with it.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your input on that. As I said, we will continue to discuss it over the coming months. But I'll close out that discussion for tonight, so unless there are any other business items, I see the mayor.
So, so real quick, um, first of all, Curtin and Heffner and Bucky made a great donation, so I don't want to not recognize that. But while we were talking, uh, Liz reached out to her contacts at R V E and R V E has stepped up to meet our one thousand dollar shortfall. So awesome job, Liz, R V E will be donating that last one thousand dollars. And again, thank you to Bucky and Curtin Heffner also, but thank you, Liz, for what you did tonight, it's, uh, for a great cause. So I just wanted to let everybody know that while, while you were all talking, she was typing away, so.
My name's Malcolm.
Thank you. Just like that, met the goal. All right, everyone, so if we don't have any further items for discussion or business tonight, we'll entertain that last motion. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion's removed.
Oh, many of the motions and seconded it, so I'm going to assume that is all in favor. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Good night.